Agenda is possible executive session pursuant to purpose three, MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, paragraph three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Minuteman Faculty Association as an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee.
Move, are we going to executive session?
All in favor? Paul, yes. Mary Ann Stenner Whelan, yes.
Nancy Dex Acton, yes.
Fred Blackcockard, yes.
Ford Scaldingover, yes.
Churri Monksfer, yes.
Chief Director Callahan, yes.
David Hunter Bolton, yes.
Okay, and everybody is unanimous, so we will ask the other people leave the room.
Okay, I think that we have a possible motion under item three. Would somebody like to actually move that motion? There's a move, but a second. Ford Scalding, and I'll read the motion. Motion is ratified memorandum about the stating for collective bargaining agreement between the school committee, Minuteman School Committee and the MFA. That is what you have agreed to, and that's what you seconded, is that correct? Open discussion. No discussion, bring it to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine in favor, abstentions?
I don't know.
Well, in a second. One abstention, and only abstentions because there was no idea for the full discussion, and no votes, one no vote. The motion passes, we've agreed to ratify this memorandum. And I want to thank the Minuteman team and the MFA team for their hard work over...how long was this?
Couple of days.
Couple, just a couple of days, one of the fastest contract agreements we've ever had. And when did we formally sign this later today? Right now? Okay, then pass.
I'd just like to say something as...
I will sign.
The representatives of the MFA are a great, great team, and we are very fortunate to have them as part of the school, so we appreciate everything that you do.
And I think it's fair to say that the length of time we spent on it reflects the seriousness with which both groups...
I was gonna say, we were having such a good time.
You find pizza here in there?
And by that coming along, do we have a public comment session? So anybody who wants to make comments? All right, well then, we move on to student reports. Christine Alaski, you're here to report for us. Very good, thank you.
Dr. Lucullan, February two thousand and fifteen, the year of girls in STEM. Dear Minuteman, only fifteen percent of the girls graduate from STEM program, and Dr. Lucullan has asked staff and students to create a camp that will encourage more girls to pursue the field and avoid the science slump that occurs after middle school. This past February vacation, thirty middle school girls attended a camp that was the brainchild of about twenty STEM girls, and their instructor, Ricky Quaid. The girls studied math and science and displayed their skills in bonding sideways, like math twister on the floor of the science lab. Minuteman is actively trying to break the stigma that girls can't do science and math. This month, February, is last for two months, and Principal Dillon believes that it is important for the school community to take the opportunity to recognize five people who have made contributions to our society. With the support of Mr. Buckley and several history students, the morning announcements now include philosophies, biographies, poetry, and music of prominent black Americans. Skills USA is continuing on to districts. Sixty students are traveling to keep tech smart, begin the process that may lead them to nationals. The top two students in every category will go to states. Chairman Michaelian Emian is running for state officer this year. Scott Agnewman is in his last semester at Northeastern for the accelerated college experience program. He's in his last class and will graduate from Minuteman with twelve transferable college credits from Northeastern University. The boys' basketball team won their game on Sunday, making them state vocational champions. On Thursday, they'll be playing against, they'll be playing again at seven PM here at Minuteman to a solo crowd, in hopes of going on to the second round in the tournament. And their opponents for Thursday's game are being determined tonight. And I have two important awards to bring your attention tonight. The first one is the Walter J. Markham Award, sponsored by MAVA. Twelve students were nominated by faculty members to potentially be selected. Maria Sev, a senior biotech, is the senior recipient. The criteria of this award included leadership in school or student activities, excellence in technical area of study, and excellence in academic achievement. The second award is the twenty-ninth annual outstanding educational technical student award. This year's recipient is Emma Kement, a senior environmental. Among the criteria for selection were technical competence, excellence, and leadership qualities.
Thank you. I'm just gonna have Michelle Roach, can you introduce Emma?
Let me introduce Emma. Emma?
Emma, say hello.
Emma, she's from Environmental, she's an environmental student, and she is our MAVA outstanding senior student this year from... I'm just telling you that there were twelve students that were nominated by their teachers and guidance counselors, and we interviewed Mr. Blake, Diane Dempsey, and myself, and we all saw that. It was a really difficult decision that we made, and I know Diane will tell you the same thing, because they were all, they were great students, they are, I know why they were nominated, but Emma did kind of float it to the top, she was a, you know, she's a great example of Minuteman. And I want you, you guys, wanna say hi to everybody?
Hi.
Emma was also here last week, and you're gonna hear about the girls in STEM camp. She was also one of the counselors at the camp last week, so she's very involved in the play, Skills USA, the GSA. What other activities are you...
I didn't look on this year, it just started this year. I present...
They're very involved in shopping environmental, so...
And we also, we celebrate, each school has an occasional student of the year, and we have a dinner where all fifty or sixty schools are there with their students, their families, and different folks from each school. And I know this year, the new Secretary of Education is gonna be there to speak to us all as well, in Worcester at Mechanics Hall. So congratulations, Emma. And I'll have Michelle stay there, and she can introduce Becky, and we're gonna have a presentation from STEM girls, as they're known around town, about what went on last week.
So I have to tell you, I was here last week, and everybody was off, having a great time, shoveling themselves out. I was here, and it was such an honor to be here. I have to tell you, it was, you know, we, this Girls in STEM and Minuteman has caused a lot of excitement, excitement with the students, and me, Becky, and anybody else who was involved. You know, we've really seen these girls come to such leadership skills and gain a lot. You know, when Dr. Lucullan said, "This is the year for STEM, and you're gonna have a, we're gonna have a STEM camp here in February," he said this at the beginning of the year, and we finally got Becky on board, and she started counting the days, and she's like, "I don't know if we can do this," you know? But they did, they put it together. And, you know, during last week, there were fifty students that were here, twenty of our girls, and thirty middle school students, all working together, great activities, you know, it was all done by our students. They organized it, they did all of the activities, they just created a great environment for the students, and it was something to see. So I was proud, I'm still proud. The good news is, we got a really great, the Boston Globe is here, and they did a great article, and you have it, please read it. And also, tonight at nine o'clock, we're gonna be featured at Nessun, so Nessun is here on Friday, and News Group here on Friday, and they took some good footage, they interviewed Becky, they interviewed both Sarah and Kalina, and a couple of campers. So it should be really, really, really good. But, you know, I'm gonna let them take the stage, and they've prepared something for you to see tonight. These are our girls in STEM.
Do you know how we don't get home until nine o'clock?
It'll be on the website tomorrow.
Excellent.
Great.
Hello, my name is Sarah Joseph, I'm a senior in environmental, and I'm the president of the Girls in STEM mentoring program.
I'm Lily McGillage, I'm also a senior in environmental, I'm your vice president of the Girls in STEM mentoring program. So what do high schools, what do high school girls say about science and math? Seventy-four percent are interested in the sciences, technology, engineering, and math. Fifty-seven percent say girls their age should have really not consider STEM careers. Forty-seven percent would feel uncomfortable being the only girl in a group or class, and fifty-seven percent say they would have to work harder on a STEM career than a man to be taken seriously. So the mission statement of the Girls in STEM mentoring program is to encourage and engage girls to enjoy STEM courses to further advance in science, technology, engineering, and math fields. So what does STEM mean to us? It means science, technology, engineering, and math, but it also means a lot more. It means innovation, it means awareness, it means college, real world, hard work, enjoyable, inspired, and so much more. So what is this program with Skills USA? It's called the Student to Student, and it starts with women in the industry and in college, and they come to mentor us girls in STEM fields and vocations, and then we are given the opportunity to mentor the middle schoolers in seventh and eighth grade. So projects and events that we have worked on or currently working on or are going to work on, we've had lunches with our mentors, we've had training to become mentors from the Skills USA staff, we had the February camp over the February break, we had an article about us in the Boston Globe, we're going to be on NECN tonight at nine, and we're going to have a float in the Lexington Patriots Day break. So these are some pictures from the luncheon that we had with our mentors. So our mentors are women who are currently in college studying STEM or in STEM careers, and they came and told us about what it's like to be in their jobs and to be women in their field, and they helped us kind of structure the camp a little. So we were trained by two state officers from Skills USA, Lauren Lassuccio and Samantha Dorwin, as well as Karen Ward, who's our executive director of Skills USA Massachusetts. And with this training, we became certified in order to mentor the middle school girls. So every day during the STEM vacation, the girls went through a different letter. One day they went science, one day in technology, one day in engineering, and one day in math. And every morning, we started off with an icebreaker, just so the girls could get to know each other, because they were from all over the place. One of the icebreakers we did, we had a snowball fight, we had get to know you, if you have the same idea, clap once, if you don't, clap twice, and we did like a canteen building thing, we had to uncan vate yourself. So these are some pictures from the science group of the camp. They did a variety of activities, they made elephant's toothpaste, they showed how milk is too dense for a diet to absorb, but once you add soap, it eats some of the fat, which makes it less dense, and they did a bunch of other activities. The other group, technology, the girls started off the day by creating a webpage, and then they learned how to build a computer, and then they ended the day by using the 3D printer and making a design that they created. So in engineering, they started their day off by building a bridge out of only marshmallows and toothpicks, and all girls succeeded with this activity. They also all succeeded with making an egg drop to hit the target, and only two out of the thirty eggs cracked. And they also made mousetrap race cars, which they raced down the hallways, and then they went to go use engineering software programs. In the math department, the girls made origami, they played hopscotch math, they did tie-dye, they played twister math, they did cyclones, and they did taboo. Just to give the girls an idea, math can be fun, it's not just how many answers can you get right in a certain amount of time on a test. So this is again some of the news that we've had in Boston Globe and NECN. So we asked the girls at the end of the week to come up with three words that we thought, that they thought described themselves, and these are some of the words that they came up with. They came up with words like creative, happy, determined, opinionated, and one of the bigger ones, if you were more surprised to see, was confidence, because you don't normally see the middle school girls, we were very happy to see that. This is a group of our campers and our counselors, and our awesome advisor, Ms. Quaid.
Anyone have any questions for them?
I'm not sure there's a question as much as, I think this is so important, and Michelle probably be telling me what company we went to, where are you?
I'm right here.
What company did we go to, the engineering company up the street? MITRE, we went to MITRE. And I remember walking through the engineering department, and there are two girls at offices, and I don't know how many were there, I've been a hundred engineers, and I said to Michelle, "There are no women." They were all men sitting and doing the work, and I thought, what unbelievable opportunities. Of course, she's dead tells me what you guys were all up to, but I think it's such a great opportunity to be engineers.
And MITRE was one of the companies that worked with our girls as mentors, MITRE and MIT Lincoln Lab. So those were the two companies, the two companies that our girls were being mentored by, the women in those companies.
Nancy?
So I'm just wondering, what activities do you think that the camp attendees enjoyed the most?
I know in math, they love twister. Probably by far their favorite. We asked a variety of girls what they liked, and I think it depends on the different girls that you asked, and I know these, because I know as the days went on, they seemed to enjoy the activities more, because they were becoming more familiar with each other.
My question was, do you have a sense of where the girls were coming from? Were they like mostly from a couple of towns, or were they spread around?
They were mostly spread around, we had one girl come from Gabriel each day, but most of them were in districts and were out of district.
Okay.
Well, I did see the article in the blog last Sunday, in the business section, which also was a lead to it on page one, so I agree about it, business section. And what, and I was impressed by a number of things, and what I thought was a great opportunity for Minuteman to be planning the program and to teach the program, and I think that that could have, what I felt was, it also had a great deal of credibility to, for the, for the middle school to see two girls out at Minuteman to reach STEM, and I think you perhaps were able to have a closer, closer contact, and they, I think they had an affinity for youth people, more so than what had been taught by adults. I thought it was a great, I thought it was just a wonderful program.
We did have feedback from parents saying that her daughter came home and was telling them at the dinner table, telling her parents at the dinner table how impressed she was at the responsibility and the enthusiasm and the maturity and, you know, that our girls presented to them, and just how in a couple of years, she could potentially be that person who is thinking about college and thinking about how she's gonna make herself an independent woman and stuff like that. So, so that was amazing to hear. And, yeah, we, we've had some really good feedback as far as that goes. And we also had two girls from the program apply to Minuteman already. One has already been in for an interview.
George was happy about that.
I'm hoping you all could get together with each other, because I know some kids who were involved with programs like this, remember years ago, they're all still friends, and they were all in science and technology and Minuteman's careers. So I didn't know what Facebook and all the other different activity options you have, and if you're done, I encourage you to do that, because it'll be fun, you'll be surprised to see how many of you are, or you might be. And my follow-up question would be then, I know it just happened, and you've gotten a lot of attention and kudos, and that's, that's great, you deserve it all. I wonder if you have had the opportunity to sort of reflect on what worked, what might have been done a little bit differently, or, I would hesitate to use the word better, because it sounds like it was really universally successful. And is there potential for growing the program to what we're boys are jealous of?
Yeah, so at the end of the week, we gave all of the counselors a survey, asking them what they thought worked, what they thought might have worked better, what they thought was really helpful, and just questions like that. And every day, at the end of the day, we gave the campers a survey, asking them objectively if they liked, how they found the counselors helpful, questions like that.
At the beginning of the week, did any of the girls voice a position or conception, and then change their position or their, you know, by the end of the week?
I know when I was doing attendance the first day, there was one girl at our end, and she was really quiet, and she's like, and I was like, "Okay, Trudy, what's your name?" And I'm like, "Okay, Trudy, I approve." And then by the end of the day, she just walked up to me, and I'm like, "Out of here, I'm ready to go." So I think it changed.
I just really have one anecdote from my town. I had a friend whose daughter was extremely bright. I mean, when she was in sixth grade, they really did project that she was an enterer, a career chemist. And then as she proceeded through the upper grade, she went from being this Nobel Prize chemist in her parents' minds to, "I'm going to get a business degree," because it was just, she didn't have this, she had this for her parents, but she didn't have the support to feel that she would be capable of a career in chemistry.
That's why we're here.
So I'm very proud of these guys, and, you know, this is just the beginning of the kinds of things we're gonna do. Thank you very much. I'm gonna make sure.
No, they were way better. I'm sure you'll do just as well. I have one flag. I can see that.
They don't want to get run, and they hurt the girls.
You're gonna do great.
I'm gonna ride back up to the valley.
To Larry Town.
So I hear Kelly has something to discuss about the building today, some building thing or whatever, is that right, Ford?
Yes, sir.
Right, so Ford, yeah, I'm moving again, go to it.
Actually, as you look at the agenda, we're gonna first discuss a couple of things. First is, is we call the Non-MSBA Building Plan Subcommittee. We had a subcommittee put together, the reason why is, is we don't feel there's a no-cost option. Something has to be done in this building on this campus to move forward. So, and some school committee members asked us that we do this. So we put together a subcommittee, you see it, it's in your packet, and I know it's been emailed to you, and it's comprised, it's interesting, of the building committee, Simon Dunyard, Frank Cannon, Dave Chrisell, Peter Sugar, the rest are Ed Bakul and Kevin and Ford. But the ones that I first mentioned are, all come from various trades. They're either project managers, or they've been construction managers, or they're fire people, you've got Belmont for example, or they're architects. So these are people who know the profession well. And they took a look at the charge that you gave them, and just to read the charges, "To define the projects that are necessary to complete to sustain the building that will provide for life, safety, the students, faculty, and staff, that will support the educational plan voted on by the school committee to provide the best estimate of each project's cost, timeline, and as fairly and honestly as possible, to assume funding from only the district communities." One thing the school committee did not do, and we didn't ask them to do, is we didn't fund this project. So what they did is, if you go back in this document, and you look at the back of the appendix, you will see all the documents that they went to. And Jack Weiss is not here, he's on a plane, I think, coming back from Baltimore, but he printed them all off, and they're about that thick. They are all on the website, they're all been there for some, for several years for you to look at. And they took those reports, and they did, I thought, an unbelievable job, putting together the report based only on these reports. So as I said, one person who had some thought, criticism or thoughts, I said, "Great, put them in writing, because if we go, if we have any changes to this report," and if you notice, it's a draft, and it's gonna remain a draft, "We can make those, but you need to go back to those reports and show us where we are in error or where the reports are in error." It's very important, because we, again, didn't hire people like Marianne Williams to go through it. So the report is, is, I think, fairly straightforward. It talks about items that have been identified by various engineering firms that need to be done, it has costs in it that were identified by those same firms, and we put together a projection. The projection, it's important to note, because when you see the presentation later, you're gonna see that the numbers on page nine are not gonna agree with what I'm gonna show you up here. The reason why is, the building committee picked this up yesterday, we didn't put in there soft costs. Soft costs are when you hire an engineer, or when you do planning, you put together schematics, you do those kinds of things, that was not put in there, and we have now added them in for our presentation that you're gonna see. So it's a different number. But it's a very, very expensive process, because it would be done over a ten-year period or thereabout. It would have to only be done when school's done sessions, so it's gonna be done during vacation times or after hours, and it's gonna be, I mean, students may be displaced, or faculty members may be displaced during the project. So that all adds to the cost of it. So you have the report, there're gonna be opportunities to discuss this at another meeting later on, but if you have any questions about the report now, love to hear them.
If, in the event we actually had to move further ahead on this, that would require us to hire some people to go through this and to come up with the same sort of accurate numbers that we have on your projection of the proposed renovation replacement, which we've already done. In other words, it'd be another step in understanding these costs that would require us to spend money to get.
That's exactly, that's part of the soft costs that you would hire. You would have to hire Skanska, you'd have to hire Castle Booth, you'd have to hire these firms.
Really expensive just to find that.
And it's important to note, that this is assuming that a community or a community do not vote for a building project. We will be out of the MSBA process, we'll do a little more on that later, but we'll be out of the MSBA process. So this is one hundred percent gonna be paid for by the district over a period of time. As you know, when you get an operating budget to vote on, there are capital assessments are also in that, and that's gonna be included. So the bills to the district communities is gonna be very high. Okay?
I'd love to also comment on what you've said.
And you all know Marianne Williams, Marianne Williams is our owner's project manager from Skanska.
So the report, the information that this report was founded on was based on usabilitys study, the prefer discriminatory design program that had been submitted to the National Building Authority. So that included studies to date about the, about the structure, about mechanical systems, et cetera. The group that worked on this...
be out of the MSBA process. So this is 100% gonna be paid for by the district over a period of time. As you know, when you get an operating budget to vote on, there are capital assessments are also in that, and that's gonna be included. So the bills to the district communities is gonna be very high.
I'd love to also comment on what you've said.
And you all know Marianne Williams. Marianne Williams is our owner's project manager from Skanska.
So, the report, the information that this report was founded on was based on feasibility study, the prefer, preliminary design program that had been submitted to the National Building Authority. So that included studies to date about the structure, about mechanical systems, et cetera. The group that worked on the subcommittee, I'd like to give them credit as professionals. I know one of them was a construction superintendent, who was the general superintendent for the building of Doris War, to give you some context. But there was an architect also involved, that there was another person who was involved with Cambridge Public Schools. And so this is what they either do now, or have done in their formal work lives. So I think it's a solid report, that they took the time to really read through the information, they asked questions of the design team, they asked questions of us, clarifications on the estimates. I think it's a very good draft report, in my opinion.
The reason why it's a draft is, the Minuteman Building Committee has accepted the report. But it's a draft because we're going to get comments, we're gonna get some things that may need to be changed in that document, so we're gonna keep it an open document. It's not gonna become effective unless the Building Committee, the building does not pass, so it's an open document. Okay? Next on the agenda is, we're asking the design team, in particular Marianne Williams, to, you're gonna, you've seen the numbers, but you're gonna see them again, to go through how they developed the numbers they did for the renovation model, for the renovation slash new model, and for the new building.
So essentially, the work that's been going on the last several months, the design team completed the design for 628 students at a moment, for three auctions, one being renovation, renovation addition, and new construction. So what they've been doing is finalizing the layouts, they've been tightening up floor plans, adding square footages, and reconciling the floor plans with the space summaries that we've been using as a guide for bringing the educational program, to bring it from just a list of rooms and square footages to what it might actually look like in the form of the school. And so they've continued on with that, where they've engaged the engineers from the multiple disciplines, where they have updated their narratives based on further study, whether it be more information from the geotechnical engineer, and hazmat reports, et cetera. And what they did is, those narratives were then shared with David List, who is the independent cost estimator working with the design team. And what they were able to do is, look at the three options, and really try and bring the three options as close as possible, each independently, as close as possible to the educational program goals. And then, once that was worked through, that information was shared, given to David List, who has been able to put a really detailed cost estimate based on square footages and information that aren't available. This is all considered, we will say feasibility study, it's, you're at an early stage, you don't have fully developed construction documents. What we're doing is, we're working with conceptual information, but really trying to refine it, so that it isn't 100% perfect, no, but it gives you an opportunity to make informed decisions, that we're at, you know, logging it one way or another for one option or one or another. We're trying to find what is most educationally appropriate, sustainable, and cost-effective solution for this district. And the decision will ultimately come from the district.
What I'm gonna go through is a presentation. After that, we'll be open for some questions, but I don't want you to panic, because the intention is, on March 12th, March 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we're gonna have a special Building Committee meeting to do several things. One is to go through the building project based on the information you have now, so you have a complete understanding of it. Also, to go through the slide presentation, because this is the presentation that's gonna be taken out to the communities. And also to inform all of us on how we're supposed to act and behave during this process. We cannot be salespeople, we cannot sell one thing or another, we wanna receive input, all we're doing is giving back. So we're gonna have those, that training session also. So those that can make it, will be a special school committee on the 12th. So all of us, you're gonna have a chance to go through again, and as I said to Cheryl, we're gonna be going through this so often, and so it's gonna become something you're gonna know. The presentation I'm gonna give, is a presentation that I'm gonna give to Dover on March 17th. And it's a presentation that Building Committee members will be giving to each of their communities over the next two months. We need to, by the end of April, talk to every one of the communities to receive input. Purpose of this is, we wanna receive their comments, their thoughts, what preferred option they think is gonna be the best preferred option, that their town might support, not will support, that might support, because that information will go to the Building Committee at the end of April. They are then gonna make, based on that information, it's gonna be written information, that information then will come to the Building Committee, who will make their recommendation to you and the School Committee. And you're gonna receive all the documentation of what your community said, so you can make an informed decision. Your decision is, is a recommendation to MSBA, who makes the final decision. Okay? So, I'm Ford Spaulding, I'm from the town of Dover, I'm chair of the Building Committee. And we're gonna go through this presentation. The purpose of this presentation, which as you know is a draft, the purpose of this presentation is, we wanna hear from you. It's time that our communities saw what we were doing, and we want, need to have your input. We're gonna ask for written input from all of you. We're gonna meet with, and you're all here, selectmen, finance committees, school committee members, as well as citizens. Our agenda. We're gonna go through who we are. Some people don't know who Minuteman is, so we're gonna go through who we are, why we need to act, what we've already done, a look at our options, what it's going to cost you, why act now, and which option do you prefer? I'm gonna just interrupt for a minute. I want you, as you watch this, to think about it, because we're gonna, I'm gonna also ask you to tell, what would you change? The Building Committee made some really constructive, constructive changes yesterday, which we worked on today, thanks to Steve, Jared in the back. And by 5 o'clock, we put this together, so it's a work in progress. Who we are. We are your public high school for students who want to actively experience their learning. We represent, we are one of, we're one of 16 towns in the district. Sorry. We offer rigorous academic courses. We offer the same academic courses that your high school does, and our students also have to pass the MKAT exams. We offer industry-supported career technical education. Our students not only graduate with the academic qualifications, but also, they receive certification in many of the career opportunities that they're interested in. We graduate successful young adults who are ready for college and careers. We've been around since the early 1970s. Why we need to act. Current building conditions demand it. That's what got this whole thing started, is our current building conditions. Current building conditions, not only for life, safety, but also just for education. So it was our current building conditions, and as you all, if you all have the opportunity to walk around the school, you'll know those conditions. In addition, we're gonna be able to enhance our educational program by improving our outdated fiscal plan. And, just so you know, the NEASC, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, has us on warning. Warning because of our facilities. Current building conditions, structural safety and code problems have been cited in multiple engineering reports. Roof, exterior shell, electrical, plumbing, fire code, building code, egress, parking lots, accessibility, ADA compliance, are just some of the issues that we have in this building. And we know that it's gonna cost roughly $100 million, roughly $100 million, just over an extended period of time, just to keep the building operational. Here are some of the pictures that show some of the present conditions of the building. Notice the crack here in the windows, but also these windows, they're not, they leak, you know, the air comes through them, they don't keep their, the heat out. We wanna enhance our educational program through this project. The School Committee has endorsed the creation of a career academy model to improve the delivery of career and technical education in our region. Career academies improve student performance by creating synergy, synergy closely connecting and integrating career education with academic studies. We all saw that with the STEM discussion we had earlier. The current school building was built in the early 1970s, and it was not designed to accommodate a career academy model. The school was designed to separate academic disciplines from one another, and to isolate career and technical programs from academic programs. It was an open classroom building. It was not built to support current education. And if you notice, when we talk about the synergy of bringing curriculum together with the career academies, we have a life sciences and services academy, an engineering, construction and trades academy, and then shared resources, and they all are combined and melded together, they all work together, so a student can flow, depending on what the subject matter is, in between any one of those circles. Here's a listing of the courses that will be in our new building, and that we're moving towards, under engineering, construction, trade, life sciences, and our shared house. And just for example, we have electrical advanced manufacturing program, web development, plumbing here, life sciences, we're gonna have health occupations, biotechnology, horticulture, cosmetology and barbering, culinary arts, it's all in the life sciences. And then the shared house is where our academic programs are gonna be located, as well as our library, and nursing services, et cetera. Accreditation, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges cited multiple deficiencies in the facility. December 2012, the NEASC placed Minuteman on warning status, solely due, only due, to the condition of the building. And the NEASC requires regular updates on our progress in addressing this one issue. And they have notified us that they wanna talk to us now, to see how we're progressing with our building project. What we've done already. 2009, we launched, through the MSBA, we were accepted into their program, and we launched our feasibility study. We formed a building, a school committee, a school building committee, which is comprised of members of our member districts, who have various talents and expertise that sit on this building committee. So we have 16 members, well, actually, we have 14 members participating from our communities, plus administration. We've hired consultants, we hired a project manager in Skanska, an architect, Castle Booze associates, and an estimator in Adalys. 2014, we were granted a final extension, we were granted a final extension by MSBA to June 30, 2016. We've been in this project for a long time. MSBA's been very patient with us, but this is our deadline. If we don't act by June 30, 2016, we will be out of the MSBA process. In 2015 now, we're releasing preliminary cost estimates. Actions we've taken. The district, which is the School Committee, the district has adopted a new educational program plan. The district has established a building design enrollment target of 200, 628 students. The administration is resolved to increase the enrollment from our member towns. We thoroughly researched all building options. We've locked in a 40% MSBA-based reimbursement rate. It's very important, I want you to remember that. We've locked in a 40% MSBA-based reimbursement rate. And we have developed a Plan B, in the event any one of our 16 towns, any one of our 16 towns fails to approve a project for the MSBA. Approve the project that we are bringing to the town, and then MSBA, based on June 30, would withdraw from our program.
2016.
2016, thank you. This is our, look at our options. The first option is, is, first three options are gonna be state-funded options. I want you to know, I've never done this, so this is the first time that I've done this one. Renovation, which is option one, this is an MSBA program. Benefits, 40% state funding. Retain, that's a minimum 40%. Retain heating and cooling systems, which we put in about five years ago. Career academy model is partially achieved. Limitations, we would have to do this while school is occupied. Phasing will cause class disruption and student inconvenience. No change in the building footprint. It's thinking the existing building and renovating it over a period of time. This is our existing building, which you're familiar with. Parking lots, athletic fields, and our entrances comes from here and here. Existing buildings, we would maintain the shell of the building, and do renovations within it. Option two, renovation slash addition, another MSBA-funded project at 40%. Structural improvements, there would be some structural improvements, mainly in the new portion. A career academy, a career academy model is fully achieved. Limitations, there's gonna be a demolition cost for the part of the building that we're not using. This is a rendering of what the plan would look like. Currently, the school goes here, we would take off this part of the school, we would add this in for additions. This is where you would have, your trades academy would be over in here, and your life sciences is, it would be in here, and this is the shared part of the building. This is a rendering of what it would look like. Again, this is, would be demolished, your trades, life sciences over in here. Option three, which is a new school. Benefits, 40% state funding. Major structural and educational improvements. Career academy model is fully achieved. Minimal class disruption, because they could stay in the old building while we're doing the new. Limitations, there would be an additional cost for demolition of the existing building, if it was not gonna be used by another party. This is a rendering of what that might look like. This is where the current building is. This is the new building. Life sciences, trades, shared space, parking, athletic fields would be potentially where the new, where the old building is. Here's a rendering of what that building might look like. Plan B, we call Plan B, which is the self-funded, non-MSBA options. Again, if one of our towns, or one or more of our towns don't support one of the first three programs that you see here, this is what we will be left with. Option four, which is repair with educational improvements. Benefits, critical repairs are addressed over a period of time, and it may, in part, support the career economy model. Limitations, not reversible by MSBA, work done when the school is occupied, it's disruptive to students and faculty and staff, extended project duration, uncertain funding, because the towns would be voting on it, probably on an every-year basis, uncertain cost escalation, depends on how long the project's gonna take. Option five, which is repairs only, no education plan. Option five, which is repairs only, no education plan. It's the current plan that we have now for education. It is the lowest total construction cost, which is a benefit. Critical repairs would be addressed. Limitations, not reimbursed by MSBA. No educational improvements for our students. Work done when the school is occupied would be disruptive to the students, faculty and staff. Extended project duration, uncertain funding, and uncertain cost escalation. This is a breakdown of what the preliminary costs would look like. Under option one, which is renovation, option one, two, and three again are MSBA, a shared cost. The estimated growth total cost is 176.5 million. With a 40% reimbursement, the towns would be paying 105.9 million. Construction time would be five years. Option two is renovation addition. Total cost 173.3 million dollars. District share 105.2 million. Could do that in four years. Option three is a new school with demolition. Total cost 144.9 million. Shared, the district cost 86.9 million. That construction could be done in two years, 2.75 years. Then we went to the non-MSBA program, which is option four, which is with partial education programs and option five with no educational programs. The cost is 198 million plus for the with education and 100 million plus without education, roughly 10 years. These estimates, which are these estimates, have been adjusted by the school building committee to include expected engineering, design, bidding, and project oversight costs. They also do not include likely cost escalations due to extended project duration. We've done some work in recent years on this campus and most recently this past summer. And when we got inside doing some of the work, we found a lot of things that weren't even on plans and needed to be taken care of. So contingency fees and this kind of a program are very expensive. What's it going to cost you? This is for Dover because that's what I'm talking about today. Option one, which is renovation, which costs over, the total cost to the district town, excuse me, is of 105.9 million, it'll cost Dover, over the period of time, $203,000. Option two, it will cost Dover $202,000 over, it's a 30-year period funding. So that's over a 30-year period. Option three, the new school would cost over $183.6,000 over a 30-year period. Our assumptions that we're using here is the student enrollment is 628 students. You know, there are a lot of variations that we've been asked for and it's very hard to be able to meet all of those and it would take our, Kevin in particular, a lot of time which is already spent. And you're going to be seeing with the printout later on with the school committee that he's done. And Dover, that's an enrollment we're capping at five students when we did these calculations. We're going to be doing that for every town. So when we come to Whaling, to Brugge, we're going to, this slide will be a Whaling slide.
I've already asked for that.
You're going to get another presentation? Can we do nothing? No, there is a, there isn't a no cost option. I hope the repairs must be done to ensure a safe building for our students, to provide them the best education possible and to maintain our accreditation. We looked at and soundly rejected this option. Next steps. April 2015, the school building committee completes collection of comments from town officials and citizens. From March 1 to the end of April, we're going to be in all 16 communities making presentations, again, asking for their comments. We want to hear from them what their preferred option would be. May 2015, the school committee votes on preferred options. So when we get all this information, it goes to the building committee and the school committee. At the May meeting of the school committee, we need to vote on what option we're going to suggest to the MSBA. July 2015, the MSBA selects that preferred option. Between July 15th and the spring of 2016, which is our town meeting votes, schematic design will be developed by our design team. 2016 to 2017, assuming we have 16 communities approving it, construction documents are prepared for that preferred option. Goes out to bid. We've selected general contractor and subcontractors, we're ready to roll. Construction begins in 2018. If you remember, a new building was 2.75 years, let's call it three years. It's going to be a long time before we're into the building if it's a new building. Why we need to act now? We have a limited window, which is June 30, 2016, to preserve our 40% MSBA funding. If we get out of the MSBA project pipeline, we might not be able to get in. There are some members of our district who are trying to get in because they're looking at programs for high schools and elementary schools, and they're not getting in. It's very hard to get in and you need to follow the MSBA guidelines to a T. We have a community that I'm aware of, who's a member district, who decided that they wanted to do something a little different than the MSBA approved. They withhold, held funding until they took care of that issue. Even if we get back in later on, our base reimbursement rate falls to 31%. That 31%, we checked with MSBA, that's the number. So we are grandfather the base reimbursement rate of 40% till June 30. If we fall out, we're going to fall to 31%. That's nine percent we're going to lose, our towns are going to be denied. Which option do you prefer? That's why we're here tonight, we want to find out which option you individually think makes the most sense now in Dover. We want your feedback, your feedback is extremely important. We want to know if you have any questions, comments, or recommendations. Which option do you support and recommend as a preferred option? And why do you support it? I want those hands, these out. These are draft questionnaires that we're going to be handing out. And we're going to be handing them out at our individual meetings and asking individuals to fill them out. We are also going to have Survey Monkey available for them to do it electronically if they want to do that. But we need to have this information, we need it, really inviting, I think that's the important because there's so many groups looking at it. Your input is extremely important. We want to pursue a project that makes the most sense for the Minuteman district as a whole. We want a project that all 16 towns can rally behind. And when we go to the town meeting, we need 16 communities to say yes. It's absolutely critical. So we're going to ask that the form be filled out either today, or you can go home and do it by Survey Monkey if you'd like to do that, or you can send it in electronically. This is the Survey Monkey, you are, you are eligible to sign in, and this is an email address that you can send comments to. Again, it's extremely important. We're going to be asking at the meeting that we have index cards and people who have questions and comments to fill out those index cards and give them to us again so we can either answer on, at that time, or if they give us the information, we can get back to them so we'll be able to answer their questions. I'm almost done. Yesterday, I contacted, I went to my Board of Selectmen and I said, we need to set up a meeting. I wanted to be able to do that before today. I said, we need to set up a meeting with your town. And you'll see by this copy of an email that I sent out today, what we've done. We've invited the Selectmen, War Committee, Finance Committee in the town of Dover, our Capital Budget Committee. We've asked both the Dover local and the Dover regional school committee. We sent out to the superintendent of schools also, as government officials to attend our meeting on March 17th, which is going to be between 7:00 and 8:30 where I'm going to be making this presentation. I also contacted the cable television stations, they are going to be there, and I've contacted Wicked Local, which is our newspaper, and they're also going to be there. Then it's going to be going up on our television, hopefully we're also going to get some more input from them. It's important to know that what we're, we also hope to do in Dover, we're going to do it, is we are inviting all current, past, and our current parents and past parents who have Minuteman students to come. We're also asking alumni to come and any other citizens to come. And I would hope that we would be able to do that in every community. And I'm hoping Minuteman can supply us the information and/or they can send out a email. All they're doing is notifying them that we're going to be meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to do it. We'll have to notify, we can't give you that information.
But if you can notify other people, that would be really helpful. And that's all we're doing is notifying because we need input, not just from our town officials. We need input from our citizens, our taxpayers, who are going to be paying the bill. What do they think? Questions? Can you identify your share?
Yeah, I'm Dan Cassidy, I'm from Concord, I'm on the Finance Committee. Also, my daughters are sophomore.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Just, you had a lot of numbers up there, but could you put into context, you know, Concord is building a high school? And could you, I'm just saying, like your presentation, can you put like, you know, dollars per student of like the Concord project or the Lincoln secondary? Because those numbers are just big numbers and they really don't have any context when you talk to people.
That is a great question and we will do that. It is important, interesting that I looked at two other career and technical schools to see in the last five years, what does it cost them? We are aligned with what it, what it was costing. I also did look at the Concord-Carlyle project.
And how to spend money.
And you know, and you also know how to follow the MSBA process. So I'm well aware of that. I keep an eye on you guys.
She actually, I was going to shed a little light if you wanted to. There is a format that the school building authority uses, they call it a space summary. And so you look at the number of students that you participate with, it's called your designer moment. And so there's, you're allowed a certain number of square footage in different categories. That's how you build it, so it's like you build the square footage of the building to accommodate the program. If you have additional square footage that isn't allowable by the MSBA, they will tell you, no, you can't have that. So that's how you arrive at that number. And it's really, it's based on number of students.
I understand, it's from a citizen, I think you just have a little more context as we've gone through this.
That's an excellent idea. Matter of fact, if you could send to us what you use, that would be really great. Thank you.
Since I'm also Concord here, and Dan and I did exchange some emails, I suggested he come tonight rather than talking to me on the phone about the project.
Chicken.
Well, he had a report due on Friday.
Yeah, Friday I'm writing a little report for our town meeting that goes along with our warrants. Our warrants this year are just very basic, just the funding of the annual students, but we're going to give them a highlight for next year.
So, Dan, we want to arrange a time and place in Concord where we can do something exactly like this, so I may rely on you to communicate with some other groups in town on that.
And you have a very good member of the school building committee in Minuteman.
You have two.
That can help. You actually have two, as a matter of fact. You have Frank Cannon, who Mary Ann referred to, and you also have Carmen Riesgo, I think you know, who is a member of our building committee.
How students are moving in.
And actually Carmen and Nancy Banks have been instrumental in this presentation.
To follow up on Dan's point, you may not need it as another column on Slide 34 when you do the three option cost breakout, but in Boxer, the FinCon likes to do a household impact cost. So if not, if you're not going to put it in the slide, then when you go to the community, the talking point, so if you approve this project, it will cost your household $14,000.
You are absolutely brilliant and we have another gentleman at the end of the table already has that information.
I know, it's Kevin Trance.
Any other comments across the chat?
Yeah, so we're going to have a meeting on March 12th, a building committee meeting that we theoretically will be coming to, so it'll be jointly.
It's actually going to be a school committee meeting.
A school, okay, so.
Imagine me telling you.
Yeah. So I know that I have like a long list of questions that I'm not going to ask here. Would it be wise for the membership to submit questions to Liz and she could pass them on to the powers that be so prior to the meeting, maybe wear some of the questions that are coming up?
That's a great idea, but maybe when Liz sends out the notice that we're going to do that, you might want to suggest that.
Right, so I intend to write a long list of questions. It won't be more than 20 or 30 pages, but I'll submit it through Liz.
And it's important that we have things in writing because again, all this information should be taken to the building committee and then delivered back to you all so you know what to ask. Kima.
This meeting is March 12th. I'm happy to give a notice in detail or not answer questions, but it'd be a good idea to invite some of the community officials who would be presenting.
These are, these are open meetings and the answer is yes, but the primary purpose is to, the school committee to get out questions, concerns, comments that they have so we can address it in preparation for when we go out to the towns, number one. The second is to train school committee members and, and building committee members exactly what they can do and what they can't do. In other words, they can't go out and sell the project, but they can go out and give information. And that's the important.
The reason I ask the question is, in Lincoln, with our coming up with the first town meeting of the 16 towns, the end of March, the main, big issue that a lot of people have been working on is a community center, question, a community center, a new school. And to get any enthusiasm, I think it would be important, and I'll explore the question with some of the topics, that this, this particular presentation for Lincoln should come after the town meeting in March, that puts me in a position to say, what do I recommend to my people to understand more about, so that's my question.
Dan, I would schedule a meeting in April because we just need to have all the meetings the end of April on. And my recommendation to the building committee last night, my recommendation to the school committee is, set up the meetings now. Don't wait. Call up your selectmen, call up, every town's different and every town's going to be acting a little different, but may, set up those meetings now because the building committee is going to be making this presentation. The administration's going to be here, but this is the building committee presentation. If you want me to come to your meeting, it has to be convenient with, so, you know, I think you need to just set it up as soon as possible so we can get on our schedule.
One more thing? I think the presentation's too big.
Oh, thank you. I haven't yet, I've only done it twice.
Okay.
Dave.
Slide seven, talk about the accreditation in jeopardy. We should be very specific, I see, about it's the building only that is causing us to be in jeopardy because, again, presentations are going to be taken out of context and run through. If the slide deck is not precise, people will infer.
Dave, I think it's important that we have handouts in addition to this at our community meetings, and I think that's one of the letters that we should have in as a handout that people can have.
But the verbiage of the slide has to be extremely precise. When you talk about accreditation in jeopardy, you have to say why.
Yep.
Because people will infer academic or otherwise. And, and the intention, and you speak about it later in Slides, I think, 12 and 14, but it needs to be on that slide that you first introduce it because as soon as people hear it, that's when they're going to imprint.
Word placement is really important.
So Steve just came in, Slide 12?
Nope, Slide seven.
Slide seven, we need to be more descriptive on.
It says accreditation in.
It says solely or something, didn't it?
Well, it says accreditation in jeopardy.
It doesn't say accreditation in jeopardy, which is what I would refer to.
Will, we'll take a look at, thank you, because we took all these suggestions and I think those people here yesterday noticed that we picked up some of our suggestions. Dave?
Ford, do you want to copy this?
No, you don't. Remember, this is a draft right now, this is changed.
But I wanted to submit some things I wanted to write on.
Well, what we'll do is, we can send it out, but please don't send it out to your communities, because it is a draft.
I have some suggestions that I wanted to...
Dave, I have suggestions, have you already changed it?
I know, but...
It's easier to mark.
You want to write down? If I could write it on the copy itself.
We'll send it out to you, but this is not for distribution at this point.
Well, you can put a watermark on all the pages, send draft on the distribution.
Anyway, one of the, the point, the point I wanted to make was, I, Lincoln, we all...
No, we're not hiding anything, we just want to get the right information.
I understand that. We all love the towns where new schools were built, and police and vice versa, they get emphasis on the educational programs that the new schools believe. I think we need to, I'm suggesting that we emphasize that more strongly, that the new school, the importance of the career academy and educational improvement, we want the new building, we want the new building to reflect the changes in the living and delivery structure. That always, that's always part and parcel of the package. And I'm thinking...
And you don't, well, you're not sure we did that?
I think it, I think, you know, I think it's getting better in this iteration.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
It's a wonderful presentation, but I have a couple of places where I think you could add that. And for instance, on the preliminary cost estimate, on the top three, I would include educational programs up there.
And do send emails, and one of our members sent us a two-page email, I won't tell you who it is, a two-page, single-spaced email with recommendations. Very, very helpful, extremely helpful. I'm sorry he's not here.
So, you're going to, you'll send that to us, so I can write on it?
I won't send it to you.
Liz will.
Liz will.
I'll give it to you.
What's all this?
I promise I won't send, I just want to write on it, it's just so much easier to try and cite papers and things. I'm sorry, go ahead, man.
Well, one, Acton's meeting is March 11th, so we have to have something ready to go for March 11th.
Building Committee meeting, Ken.
Are leading our meeting with town officials.
We'll go with what we have.
And second of all, so what is...
Let me just interrupt on that. We need to know when those meetings are.
Well, that's what I wanted to talk about.
And I think we should coordinate that with superintendent's office.
If you want to schedule, that's right.
Well, so, what you need to do, so there's two things that has to happen. One is, we need to know, who is the person in the community? So, in some places, we have multiple people in the community, we have people who are sitting on the Building Committee, and people sitting on the School Committee. So, we need to, so as Chair of the Communications Committee, I need to know, who is the person who is going to, we're going to hold accountable to make sure that the meeting, that at least one meeting is held in your community. And two, we need to know when these meetings are scheduled. You know, and so, the timeline we have is really March-April, which is a really challenge for all of us, because it's town meeting season, and our local officials are already booked meetings, which is sort of why I got this little window in Acton to do this. And that's not, probably will not be the only meeting, but I would be going then too far into April. So, it's really imperative that I know who is that person representing, and we also know when the meeting is scheduled, and what your requirements are in terms of support. In some cases, obviously, Ford is comfortable doing this with minimal support, but some of us may want to have somebody there. So, you know, we have, we have commitments from Acton, Belmont, Carlyle, Concord, Dover, Lincoln, Nida.
These are date commitments?
No, these are people who have committed. We have point person, Lexington, and Sudbury and Stowe. But, so, Paul, oh, no, wait, Lincoln, Lincoln, Peter, and you.
Congratulations.
He said yes yesterday.
So, it's really, so I will be in touch with people where I don't have names of who is going to be that point person, because when we take the vote in May, you know, we want to be able to say, we did meet with representatives of each of our sixteen communities. That's really going to, it's going to be so critical, because as you know, we're going to get the town meeting in 2016, and people are going to say, well, I never heard about this. And that is just the nature of, people, you know, have so many other things to pay attention to. So, it's important that we can go back and, you know, remind people of the discussions that took place during this time period.
Okay.
Communication, C.
We just did communication. Alice?
Oh, I have more comments on email.
Why don't you just email them to Steve or myself?
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody's work right here.
As part, as part of the communications piece of the School Building Committee, Kevin is going to just, for information purposes, share with you the analysis that has been done regarding the tax impact on median homeowner of Michigan communities for each of the projects.
Your slide?
No, you're going to have the handouts hanging around. And I don't, we can talk more about it on the 12th, but it is what everyone's been asking for. We didn't want to give it out to people until the school committee had seen it and asked some questions about it. Let me, if you open up the first page of this, it's organized with a table of contents. And in Appendix C and B and A, well, I should say A, there's more detailed capital assessments. If you go on Page Two, you'll see the project, each of the ones that Ford just outlined in his presentation, the total square footage, the total project budgets that you just saw, the estimated district share, et cetera, then the total annual debt service for each of these projects are listed on Page Two. Then in the pages following is a projection for each of the projects. On Page Three is a renovation project under the revised agreement, and under the current agreement. By town, and Page Four would be the renovation addition, Page Five the new, Page Six the repairs only. And then the Appendix A is the backup for the capital assessments for each of the models.
Can I just say a question, sorry, Ford? That's illustrated in yellow, is that five, is that a minimum of five, is that, if that means I can't read it?
Yes, yeah. It's pretty tough to read. And then the nitty-gritty stuff is on Page, beginning on Page 14. You can see the median home value, again, we use the median home value, so it's not an average. This is the value where half the homes are higher value, half the homes are lower value. Yes?
What year is this based on?
2015.
Thirty.
The most, yeah, the most up-to-date assessment.
Most up-to-date, and it's based on the current enrollment.
So, this is, but these houses, the median home value, that's raised on 2013.
Right, the most recent available. We were just, we just reset. I think, we'll check the database, this was done by our financial advisor, you're the one that used the database.
I know, I'm already, my taxes were already raised considerably, but we just, we called it, we just reset.
Alice? Okay, so, he thinks that...
What year does the debt fund start?
It would start, I think, the first year, the first fiscal year that the bond would impact would be FY '20, I believe.
That's correct. Yes, and this assumes a 628 student enrollment with a percent annual growth in new district enrollment projected out to fiscal '20, when the, when the tax, when the debt service would impact assessments.
So, I just want to, Kevin has done beyond yeoman's work, responding to the multitude of models that many people have asked for. And so what we've tried to do, and what Kevin, I think, has accomplished in this packet, this is it, we're not doing any more models. This would be able to accommodate every question we've had so far, because we just cannot get bogged down in the constant scenarios that people are thinking up. This is the scenario, and we outline the assumptions pretty clearly. Any model of forecasting has reliability and validity components to it. This, for the assumptions we've made, is fairly reliable. Is it valid, making projections? We guarantee nothing about these projections, absolutely nothing. But we've used the assumptions, we've listed them, and we can go into any details about them that you'd like now or at the next meeting, but as you reflect on this and see the data, I'm pretty taken aback by how little this impacts any community in our sixteen-member towns on a per taxpayer basis. It's miniscule.
I think in Concord, we have on our warrant this year only the budget article, and almost everything else about the budget, changes up and down costs and revenue, is totally obscured by the fact that our enrollment nearly doubled, you know, one year to the next, because we don't know enrollments. It almost doesn't matter what else happened. And on the other hand, the share of the capital project, whichever model it is, over the course of the construction and payback period, a little change in this number, a little change in that number is not going to have a huge impact on the annual cost to a resident property over in Concord, because the numbers are small to begin with, when you spread it out that far. So, I think that's, that's important to remember, that if something shifts a little bit, it's not going to be an order of magnitude change on an annual cost, if anybody even could project it out twenty years from now, or thirty years from now. This is going to be pretty close, and it's going to be, you know, relative to the other communities where you're at.
So, we can spend some more time on this on the 12th, but one of the assumptions that we made in regards to this was in out-of-district tuition revenue and the capital fee. I am pleased and excited to report to you today that the State Board of Education voted and approved those regulations that are going to require a capital fee be part of non-resident tuition qualify.
Thank you for your testimony on that.
I was there for seven hours today.
I thought they were going to put it all later than that?
We were informed Saturday, me through Dave Ferrara, the Executive Director, that the Governor Office of Finance there had released these regulations from embargo, and there was a board meeting planned for today, and over the weekend, the department released the regs and indicated they would be voted today. Yes, that has been delayed for one year, which is about the best we could have hoped for.
And what is, roughly, what is going to be the fee?
It's pretty close to how we've been estimating in here. From, what was it, four thousand dollars a kid would be added on to the non-resident tuition rate, unless that sending community was involved in an MSBA project, or they had five or more vocational programs, then it would be seventy-five percent. Best we could have hoped for. Two years ago, two years ago, we never thought this would ever happen. Two days ago, I think it was going to happen.
Since I'm going to the Finance Committee tomorrow, and perhaps Steve could send something out that says exactly...
Well, we're waiting for the department to release their press release, we're not going to do a press release for them.
All I can say is, it's good news.
It's passed, I was there.
Yeah, it's passed, and...
And they had an amendment to delay the exploratory exclusions, that would have decimated us for next year.
Could you use the microphone, please? Sorry, hi, Marjorie. So, is there a possibility to affect any kind of change to that, or is it just a delay?
No.
It's just a sentence?
It's a delay.
Is it a delay?
We, and for the town of Lincoln, probably some of the other towns which have the vote of, oh, on the agreement, I put wrong, for the town of Lincoln, that was the one issue that was unknown.
It's a tremendous game changer.
Fortunately, because I was wondering how, you know, that critical vote that's taken on March 30th.
Yes.
Four thousand dollars per student for the capital fee, is that a number that's in the regs, or is that a percentage of something that moves with time and stuff?
It's what our, it's what our towns pay on the average, in these models.
So, it's based on the average?
It's based on our average for our projects.
Current project, when we start paying.
When we start paying.
That's good. I was just worried, because some of these numbers that get put into the regulations just stay there, and then twenty-five years later, it's four dollars.
Right.
And you wonder what the heck. Fun point question, would it contribute to interest on short-term borrowing during the construction term?
I don't believe so.
Actually, I believe it would. It's considered capital in debt.
And it's an MSBA-approved project?
Yeah, oh, short-term borrowing, MSBA project.
Yes, yes, yes.
Anything involved with the MSBA accounts.
The year-to-year borrowing that you do until you finish with the job and vote the fiber bond.
If it's MSBA-approved, it would, yeah.
Excellent.
Cheryl?
Okay, just to get the meat on this, when would this fourth, what year would this capital contribution go into effect?
July 1st, 2015.
Okay, and then to that point, I know that there was some going back and forth about whether it would be capital for the operation of the school, or whether it would be capital just for the MSBA project.
If you're involved in an MSBA project, then that would trigger the additional capital.
So, as long as we're still in the MSBA pipeline?
Good point.
Wouldn't it probably be when you're spending on another project?
But we have capital projects going on all the time. So, my question is, once this is ratified and sealed by DESA...
Which was done today.
Does that mean the tuition rates as of September 1 are going to reflect the four-thousand-dollar capital contribution?
No, because we're not in an MSBA project, we don't have an approved...
Okay, that's what I needed to clarify.
With board and then...
Which brings up the point that Cheryl brought up, and Alice brought up, said to me, it's another reason why we need to have sixteen communities vote for our MSBA project so we can charge a capital fee. It's another reason, quite frankly, why communities that are thinking that they maybe should leave should take a very serious thought to whether that makes a lot of sense for them to do that.
Judy, and then Cheryl?
I, I don't know, you guys move a lot faster than I do, but is it the case that if we went to Plan B, the one where there is no MSBA, there would no longer be, there would not be a...
No capital fee.
It would be no capital fee for our communities that have opted out.
I don't want to, I don't want to cut this off, Ford, I don't want to cut this off, it's important.
I get excited.
If you just, we have thirty minutes as a schedule.
Would hypothetically, this four-thousand-dollar contribution lower our costs to member towns?
Yes.
There you go.
It's all in this projected cost.
Thank you.
Yes, that's me, Cheryl's report, okay, two items, first. So, as you may recall, we've had some discussions about a possible accommodation on transportation for Mary Ellen, I won't go into the reasons why, I don't know it. So, I just wanted to bring you up to date on what has transpired since the failure of the implementation of remote communication policy, was the administration did make an offer to have a Minuteman van pick up Mary Ellen when she wanted to be picked up, to bring her home, when she wanted to... when she wanted to be picked up, to bring her home when she wanted to go home. And so I'll let Mary Ellen talk about it.
So what I want to say is how very disappointed I am in you, Jim, because the school committee charged you in November, December to collaborate with me on any kind of suggested implementations, which hasn't been done. I did get an email, and then I looked at your minutes, and the minutes said that you were going to speak with me, but you haven't done. I feel that it was only proper and appropriate to have asked me to come to the officers' meeting or to speak to me in person. That's all I have to say. We cannot unstop this conversation and this discussion right now because you haven't held up your end.
Well, I did communicate with you.
No, no, stop. You said that you were going to communicate me, and I'm not talking about after the fact. I'm talking about sending me in the discussion, which you haven't done.
Well, I'll be happy to have you come to an officers' meeting, Mary Ellen, and talk to us if that's what you'd like.
That's what I call collaboration, not sending me something after the fact that you discussed it without my presence. That's not collaboration.
I'll be happy to have you come to me. And that was, that solution was unsatisfactory there. So that's as far as we've gone there. Yes. You said that the remote control, the remote participation program was dead or something? Well, I said, or if you may recall, we spent, we spent an hour, almost an hour, two separate meetings, so two hours on this. And the membership, there were a number of people who were adamantly against it, a number who really liked it a lot, and a number who, despite having two or three different options for it, weren't even willing to move ahead on one meeting trial. So that seemed, that seemed to me that there was not enough support to spend a lot of time and effort to pursue it. If the, if the compromise A came up with was no good, if the one that Mary Ellen came up with was no good, which reflects pretty closely mostly the, one of the templates. So I, you know, I didn't see that it was, since it was not a groundswell of support for it, it seemed to me best to let that issue rest for a little bit, and if necessary, bring it up again at some later date, but not immediately to spend another, you know, hours and hours and hours of people working on it, and then another hour or so of school committee time. So if I'm wrong, if people, if I got a groundswell of people who want to bring it up again, then I'll do so. But that's not my takeaway from the two meetings we spent on it, that final...
I have the wording of the last quote.
What was that?
I have the wording of the last quote on there. Want to read it?
Sure.
This is on eleven eighteen table. All motions related to remote participation indefinitely, and there was twelve in favor on exception.
One of the things that's in the packet for us, or offering that was at the table, is minutes of the officers' meeting which was discussed in February.
That's what I was, that I was quoting by far. It was another discussion about having small group activities grow up.
That was before, I think, was table. So on another issue, you may recall, at our last meeting, we talked about the possibility of a trial allowing to put some of our meetings online. I don't know, was that email address sent out to the membership as a whole?
No.
No, okay, so what my recommendation, there is a, they did stick a meeting online, and there's an email address to access that. My recommendation moving forward, I don't think we need to vote for this, is to, you know, let another few months go by, have them put another few meetings online. Please send everybody the email address so they can look at that.
I saw it.
Oh, you saw it. Right, okay, and then we'll, you know, then we'll eventually, after we have a few more months' experience with it, we'll develop some sort of informal policy.
So you're going to put it up monthly?
I think monthly, yes.
That's a good idea.
So every main school committee meeting within one week of the meeting should go online at that address, yes.
How do we let people know it's there?
I send an email.
No, I mean, I mean, the general public...
How do we know it's been launched?
The one from one...
No, no, I know.
I just mean, general public, how do they know that they can come to the website and look for our meetings?
Including us, too.
That's a, I mean, I don't mean once a month letting people know, but just in general, let people know that our meetings are now available on the website.
We can make a formal announcement once you're satisfied with what's up there. I wouldn't do it when you're satisfied with what's up there.
Right, Mary Ellen.
So just a question, this may not be the time, but it's the time in my mind. But anyways, I just wanted to just make a suggestion, and that's certainly up to the committee, but as we talked before earlier about it, I would like to put up their whole packet up online for folks to see. And I'm just wondering if this group committee considered that, because I think it would be extremely helpful to the public to be able to look at the packet before they come and print out what they want, and then they can follow along. And they also put any of their correspondence up as well.
We could easily do that, so...
I would appreciate that if the public would as well. Do I need to make a motion?
It's not on the agenda right now, so I think...
That would be on those things that...
It would not be on the policy or something.
Wouldn't that be on the things that run?
That's not a big deal.
I think that it's all public information, it doesn't take up a lot of room. So you might as well just, you know, put it up there.
Your agenda's here.
What can we find on this to send us anything electronic?
We can do, we can, we'll do.
Nothing's private.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Superintendent's report.
I want to introduce George Clement. Steve Sharrick. George is Assistant Principal of Educational Services in Trump, taking over for Jack while he's in the principal role. And Steve, you met as the Director of Community Outreach. I've asked him to give the school committee an update on what we're doing with market, and you're up there.
Thank you very much, Dr. McQuillan. As you said, I'm Steve Sharrick, Director of Outreach and Development for the school. This is George Clement. Even though he has more seniority here, I have more seniority like current position than he has in his. So that's why I'm going to introduce him. I started January fifth, and he started January...
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I'm a good teacher here.
Fabulous.
But he's a longtime teacher, this is his first administrator role. I've been a vocational administrator for fourteen, fifteen years, three years at a law school. I also served as a town moderator, city counselor, assistant to the mayor. So I've done a lot of stuff in Durham. We're going to start with George giving a presentation about what he's up to, then I'll talk to you about what I'm up to.
So currently, right now, I'm Chair of the Schools Enrollment and Retention Committee. We're working with a consultant named Mark Carter. He's a founder of Tools for Schools, which is out of Cleveland, Ohio. He's a nationally recognized expert in the field of marketing enrollment and retention. He's working with four vocational schools in Massachusetts at this time. He has a great track record of success. Depends on what school district he's worked in, where enrollment's gone up, twenty-five, fifty, three hundred percent. We'll wait and see what ours will be. And he sees great growth potential with our partner schools here in our sixteen-member towns. So part of what we're working on is a three-pronged strategy in how we're approaching admissions. And those are dealing with perception, exposure, and trying out new ideas. So I'll give you a little taste of what we're working on in terms of perception. And that is addressing some powerful themes that resonate with millennial generation, the kids that we're trying to bring into, bring into our schools. So one of the messages that I've already thrown out to the districts that I've visited is I'll say something like this. Would you rather hear about a Hawaiian vacation, or would you rather experience a Hawaiian vacation? That's a pretty easy question right now, you know, I'd rather experience. Millennials crave experience. And so what we tell them is, we're offering you experiential learning. You get to work with our experts, you get to work with advanced equipment. There's a difference between knowing about something and knowing something.
Let me interject. Remember the first slide Mr. Spalding gave you tonight? "We are your public high school for students who want to experience their learning." There was a reason for that.
One of the things I'll say is, if you want to know something...
That's also a word I could pronounce. Yes. We didn't use the term experiential, which is the education.
So one of the messages I'll say, I've said is, if you want to know something, or know about something, it's pretty simple nowadays, you can use this, you can look it up. Want to know what DNA is? Lots of people know what DNA stands for. The difference is, if you come to Minuteman and you're in our biotechnology program, not only do you know what it is, you know how to splice it, take it out of one bacteria, rearrange it, put it into another bacteria. That's the difference in the experience that we can offer here, that's our value add. We talk a lot about the light at the end of the tunnel, and we try to connect the connection between a career in technical education and career in college readiness. When we're speaking to the parents and to the kids, we're really trying to emphasize that Minuteman offers a competitive advantage. A student who comes through our program can graduate with significant certifications and licensure that really enhance their resume. We tell them that while millennials want to feel special, and all parents want to think that their kids are special, you want to come here, we're going to make you feel special. You can become a big fish in a small pond. But here's the thing, we're exclusive. We can only accept about a hundred and fifty-seven students per class. So if you want a chance to experience that, you want to be part of something special, you've got to apply now, you're going to get first in line. We don't have that many spots. Let me change it how we're going to address it. Second thing is our exposure. We really need to be focused on highlighting our success stories and pushing results to mass reading. We've been very successful in the last year between NPR, We're the Girls Today, talk about NECN, we've had some great articles published from the Globe and the Herald. And when those stories are published, we need to do a focus on using social media to push them back up to all of our members, anybody connected to the Minuteman community. We want to keep Minuteman top of mind so that constantly it's a drip, 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 where people are hearing good things about Minuteman, and if someone were to come along and talk about Minuteman, oh yeah, I just read something good. That's what we're really seeking to do. We're also working with a new videographer to help us put together a new recruitment video that's going to be aimed toward the millennial audience. We want something that's fast-paced and upbeat so that by the time it's done, the kids are out of breath and just dying for more. And then they'll get to listen to me give a presentation. And keep the roll going. The last emphasis here is trying out new ideas. If you've, if you've had a chance to read Joan Berger's book, Contagious, Why Things Catch On, one of the things he talks about in there is a concept of trialability. And it's the idea that you go to the supermarket and they give you a free sample, or you buy a new car, they give you free satellite radio for a couple of months. We need to do some, we're looking at doing more things in terms of bringing kids here so they can try us out, like the girls in STEM camp, which was very successful. Trying to do more things over the summer. Things during the year that will help kids to come in. Because right now, with the girls in STEM, but the eight girls who could have applied, we got two, I'll take those odds every single time if we can get a couple hundred kids in here. We're also taking a fresh look at some of the programming that we traditionally have been doing, our open houses, for example. What can we do, maybe to revamp, to attract kids, but also, once they are in here, what can we do to retain and keep Minuteman on their mind all summer long, so by the time they get here September, they're rear of them?
The next topic is optimism. And one thing you'll find out about George and about me is that we are both optimists, and we both expect that we can accomplish the goals that are set for us. There are reasons to be optimistic about our recruiting and marketing strategy and increasing the number significantly of in-district students who apply here, get accepted here, enter here, stay here, and graduate from the school. First, as Dr. McQuillan's told you at prior meetings, there's been a marked shift in perception about vocational education, career in technical education. You've seen it at National Public Radio, the Boston Globe, the Boston Herald, Pathways to Prosperity. People are pumped. The new governor is pumped up about vocational education. So there's a lot of reason in that, in that regard. Parents are starting to look at us a different way than they certainly did in the nineteen-sixties or nineteen-seventies, God forbid. Second, as George mentioned, we're developing a strategy, along with Mark Kurna, who's a nationally known expert in this area, on how we're going to attract and retain students. We have a working group internally, made up of administrators, staff members, and teachers, working on this, and we're going to put together a plan, a solid plan, to get this done. Finally, Mark Kurna, when he spoke to our group, and he's going to be meeting with us, I guess, in a couple more weeks, looked at the base that we work from, roughly thirty-seven hundred to four thousand eighth-grade students in our district. He says, wow, that's a rich environment. That is a, an environment ripe for growth. We're getting just a small fraction right now of applicants from within this district. We can definitely increase that. Because the opinions are changing out there. As long as we reinforce that with our public comments, with the way we react, act with parents internally and with students who are potential applicants, we should be getting some, some positive results. And I know Dr. McQuillan's gone through the math here, but basically, we have increased the number of kids coming in here. If you look at the pool of applicants, it's a rich pool to tap, and I think we're going to be successful doing that. So here's what I'm going to do. I think, that's it for you, I think. I'm going to be trying to strengthen our message and unify our message. To whom? The news media. Thank you, Carlisle and Muschio. To our member communities, to prospective students and their families, to our staff, our students, and our policy papers. Who's that? That's you. To our students' families, to our business partners. That includes the Program Advisory Committee, the Workforce Investment Boards, the chambers of Congress. To leaders in education, including those in our professional associations, such as the Mass Association of Vocational Administrators, DESE, et cetera. To our partner schools, which we used to call sending schools, we're now going to call them partner schools, thanks to Mark Kurna. And finally, to our elected officials. I'm going to be working closely with the Communications Subcommittee, and already have. Nancy's on that group, Carmen's on that group, Ford's on that, and is a bigger group as well. Working closely with the School Building Committee to help unify the message, make sure that it's a comprehensive but concise message that we send out to the communities about what we are offering as options and what the positives and negatives are of each of those options. I'll be sending out, in addition to those news releases, which are already going out regularly, from Judy Backs. She's been contracted with the district for several years now. She's going to continue to do stories, like human interest stories about teachers who do great things, kids who get awards. I'm going to be doing more district-level stuff, like things on the building committee, things about open houses, et cetera. I'll hopefully PowerPoint presentations, preparing documents. And George mentioned the video. We're going to be meeting tomorrow morning, Superintendent George and I, with a videographer by the name of Andrew Mutch. And we're going to probably ask him to do two assignments, one of which will be the informational video that George uses when he contacts parents, contacts students, goes out to middle schools, goes to community groups. Another probably will be related to the building project. We also need to make sure we have an active presence on our website and in social, in social media, and we also need to bolster our internal communication. Is there something? George, do you want to go for it?
So we're working to strengthen the way we market our school and attract new students. We're working to strengthen the way we communicate both internally and externally. These are works in progress, and we're both very optimistic, and we'll be seeing and hearing more from both of us.
I know we can't compete with the girls in STEM. Certainly not with Ford. What's that? Thank you. Sure.
I'll just, I'll be real quick. I've worked with Steve, over the last two or three weeks. He's incredible to work with. And what impressed me the most is, is not only last night did we receive a lot of ideas, but we've also spent some time meeting with him, and he's a great listener. And he not only is a listener, but he takes in the information, digests it, and gets back to us. Gets back to us very quickly. And so the iteration that you saw tonight is one of probably five or six iterations that we've had so far. that we've had so far and we're working on. And it is absolute joy to work with him. So I welcome the board.
Thank you.
I have one other comment.
I heard a lot about, you know, the staff and stuff like that, but I'll tell you, I mean, having been a Volk student and have two students that are in the programs here, the kids are your biggest advocates. And you talk about the socialization of stuff and energizing the millennials. We talked about the STEM girls sitting around the table and talking with their parents. I mean, again, I have a junior who's part of that STEM program, and every night she'd come home and re-energize us as a family about what the great things we're doing. But getting the kids to think about the evolution of the revolution, right? What are we doing to change your mind and change this organization? Enlist the kids. They've all got phones, right? To submit video snippets, they're edited by the administration, but putting that conscious stream where you get the community to want to check out our website, what's changing, what's happening, and what's going on daily.
I think we have a new committee member over here who's just volunteering.
But it's that, it's that social consciousness, as you were speaking of, but the kids drive it.
You make, I say one thing, you make an excellent point. And we fail to say that when we meet with Andrew Mutch tomorrow, what we have in mind is a video that almost is exclusively kids. Not us, not old people talking about why kids should come here. Kids talking about why kids should come here.
Yeah, why they're here, why it's important, their siblings, tech ads, the tech ad community. Lots of the parents in the community don't know that we fund those teachers. That's got to change.
I would like to add to that, that I can be recognized.
I know who you are.
It's not just kids talking to kids, but as we saw with the two ladies who were here earlier tonight, they are really credible with parents. And one of the, I mean, as an adult, I'm not only impressed by how well they spoke and what they were doing, but the confidence they had, I mean, you know, in preparing, in planning, in presenting, they were, all those words that were up on the screen, that was them. And I think that means a whole lot more to parents than they can read in any brochure is to see that happening. That could be my kid, let alone their son or daughter saying that could be me in three years. A parent having an opportunity to feel like I could be proud of this kid who's always felt a little bit marginal or different or whatever, that here they can succeed and have the courage to stand up and speak in front of the school committee. I think that was one of the most important things that happened.
Absolutely. If I could just comment on that. We know one of the things that we want to revamp is our Student Ambassador program. And we're talking about, the ideas that are being spun right now is that that's going to be considered an elite group. What you saw up there was some of the best of the best, and that's what we want. We want to make that the prevailing thought of upperclassman type of thing and honor type of thing to be able to do it because we want kids who can do that with other kids, with parents, with you guys. We want the cream of the crop to be out there, coming with me to other schools, but also running small groups for kids and all the rest of you, just what you're talking about. So we're creating those parameters in that, what does that kid look like? And then let's go contact them and mold them.
Having the Student Ambassador is awesome, but I think we really need to add, to Dan's point about the kid, Dave, I'm sorry, long night, second meeting this week. These kids are live 24/7. Their parents, if they need to know where to buy pizza, they don't grab the phone book, they grab the phone. So we need to have a presence where when you hit that search button, we are there, and it's not just the webpage. It's a video with the Powderpuff Gang. It's the video with the kids creating the trebuchet, you know? It's, because today, people think in 30 seconds. And if you lose, if you don't get the message in 30 seconds, then you've lost them.
Regional agreement revision.
Regional agreement, regional agreement revision. I can't. On February 6th, Friday morning, we had, I believe, all 16 communities were here. We had about 45 people, town managers, FinCon members, select board members. They had a very candid and interactive discussion with one another. I think it was a great opportunity for some of the smaller communities, Foxborough in particular, to hear from the larger communities, different aspects of their concerns about the regional agreement. Some of you were there, I don't know if you had anything to add to it. There have been some continuing meetings conducted and scheduled with the six remaining communities. We have had a meeting in Belmont this morning, which Kevin and the task force attended. Kevin and I are going to Carlisle next Tuesday night.
You are?
I believe so.
I thought it was the 10th of March.
Oh, it might be the other Tuesday night. Whalen on the 11th, I believe. So we're making some headway. I've been in contact with Lincoln again this week about having that Lincoln Committee meet sometime next week. We're supposed to hear from Tim Higgins tomorrow.
My intention was, first thing tomorrow morning, we get the question of what's the lesson about that committee meeting, for the particular program we're talking about.
I'm hoping they could have it next week, so, because of the timing of having it. Obviously, these things are, we're doing more and more and more every day.
Okay.
I thought I might have an intermunicipal agreement for you to consider in executive session, but I do not, so I'm going to pass over that part of the agenda. Before I give it to the school calendar, I just noticed that my comments that I testified at the Department of that are at your table, actually. That's cool. Yes?
You could have a Minuteman app that was just a little mobile shot of what was going on, change it to the website.
I know Anna Maria's looking into that. We're revamping our entire website, but probably will be launched in July.
I'll never find anything yet.
No, you'll find it a lot easier.
Okay, thanks.
That would be a blessing.
School calendar was passed out this evening, the one that we need to vote on, number 8D.
I have a question on this. I know that there's yet another revision that was at our station, like that's the latest that I've seen that's not something that happened.
That's it.
I'm wondering, Jack, is it true that the major change here is you added 80 snow days to next year's calendar? Is that what happened?
So I don't know what the changes were in this one, if there were anything significant.
Yeah, it's just the MCAS were added.
That's it. So this is the final vote. We're not having two-week vacations at Christmas for a few years, but...
It's the same calendar that I presented at the last meeting, just MCAS inserted into this.
And if you're interested, yes?
Freezes in August, 31st, circle. That's great. I'm wondering if every time there's a circle or a rectangle, it could be repeated down below, so we're, put a circle around the 31st where it says, need to do more rotation. It took me, I hit that now.
I think it does on the other printout.
It's not the one I'm pretending. Maybe I'm a little, I could be a little slow on it, but it took me a while to figure out, oh, I see. They match, but I, thanks to my problems, rectangles and, oh, could be repeated, I think it'd be very helpful.
Alice? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I just have a suggestion. In terms of something like 10% of American males are colorblind, and so, and in particular red, green, colorblind, and so it might be useful to have it printed in colorblind-friendly colors. There are, there's a set of colors that is easier for colorblind people to differentiate.
Thank you. If you're curious, our last day is scheduled for the June 27th. For this year, not next year. And we may be making a change in that after some discussion with the faculty association.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I'm looking at what was handed out tonight. It still indicates that 23rd is the last day of school, so...
Yeah, that's for next year.
Oh, excuse me, everyone, I'll go back to...
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to accept the calendar presented?
Section 2nd. I agree with the approval that Eleanor S. presented. And no exceptions, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Just Barry. Nobody else can leave. Oh, Jack, go to the next one.
So Kevin? Oh, I'm sorry, you're...
I am, but right now, you said not...
Kevin.
Connor. Kevin Mahoney.
Yes, Chair members of the committee, three items. Under my report, the first is an update on a contract renewal. I just wanted to inform the committee that the audit, the current audit firm, Lansing Heat, their contract expired after the most recent audit. I brought this up in the officers' meeting. It was recommended at that time that I have a conversation with the Finance Subcommittee about how to proceed. The audit firm is engaged by the school committee, and also audit services are exempt from the provisions of the 30B bid laws. So after a conversation with the Finance Subcommittee, the recommendation was that we seek to ask them for a quotation for a three-year successor contract. And before, I wanted to report that to the full school committee before pursuing that option. I think it requires a formal vote, and I just wanted to report that to you because it's a current-related matter that we can do. And I wanted to report that to the community just in case there are any concerns about proceeding in that direction.
And Dave, maybe you can follow up because we had a long discussion about this at the, I think at the officers' meeting, it was mostly let's check on the legalities of it. At the finance committee, we had a longer discussion, but we were very happy with the performance and also sort of the public presence. She's very easy to understand, she's excellent at answering questions. It seems like they're very responsive to things, whether it's the woman standing in front of us or the board firm that's standing behind her. But more importantly, we felt that there had been a number of recommendations made a few years ago where we have made significant progress through staffing and procedural and policy changes, and we felt it was important, now that those have been made, to let them run out and observe the district's performance financially under those conditions rather than having somebody new come in. And I say that as somebody who, as a financial manager, feels that it is appropriate and best practice to every once in a while go out to bid on these kinds of things, whether it's required or not, just so that you're testing what's out there in terms of service and price.
And we talked about that.
And we did talk about that. And that's why we have asked Kevin to get a proposal, as if, I think, Kevin, it was going to be posed as if they were bidding against the vendors.
Yeah, certainly we were going to ask for competitive bid. I have data that I've collected of what other similar school districts are paying for their annual audits, and we can make an evaluation on that. This is just reminding me whether the discussion centered around a one-year renewal or going into a three-year contract. It would be my preference to enter into a three-year contract.
I heard you said at least one year, but...
I think you said at least one year, but I think at least I would support a three.
I would support a three.
Perhaps then when I solicit that proposal, I'll report that back.
Or one or three?
Yes.
And then it may be a difference in price. Also, we noted that for the last three-year contract, there was no increase from year to year. It was the same fee all the way through. Dave, did you have anything else?
No. I just seconded what you said, I would, you said it all. Nancy, do you have it?
Well, I'm struck by, you know, I'm strongly in favor of doing this because I feel that there have been some significant issues, or not significant, but issues that were raised. And I think that we're on a multi-year plan to address those. And so the fact that we have this firm that's been working with us and helping us to get to a higher level of performance, I think it makes sense to stay with this firm, and it's possible at the end of the three years, it might be a good time then, at that time to reassess and see whether we should have a fresh set of eyes looking at it. But I think that, given that we're in this process, it just makes a lot of sense to stay with the firm that's been working with us rather than having somebody else raise a whole, raise some other things that maybe, you know, you do need to address but are not really, that will sort of take us away from the specific objectives we're working to now.
Very good. I'll pursue that quote, report back. The next item on the agenda is the financial reports as of the second quarter. We discussed this at the Finance Subcommittee on February 10th, and I'd just like to highlight some of the items that we looked at. First of all, we looked at some of the areas where we were running over the budget on page 23. I'll refer to the function code on the left-hand side into the... But on the 1430, our little services account is projecting over about $27,000 related to these actual services and some additional collective hiring services. And function code 2720, the testing and assessment line, those are sped services that prior years were charged out of a different function code, as well as 50% charged out of the district and 50% charged out of grant. We've taken those and budgeted those in the district, and we see we're running over based on actual services. School bus transportation, we're running a little bit over based on actual routes, projection of actual routes. We're going to be bidding that contract. I advertised it this week, and we should be receiving bids on that on the 19th of March. I'll report that at the meeting after that date. And our utility services, because of the weather, is running higher, 15% higher than what we were at this point last year. If you're at page 24, on the top line, 4210, that's showing a projected balance of about $4,000. I'll remind you that this is a report that is dated August 31st. The significant of that line item is that's where our snow removal line item is. We budgeted about $55,000 this year. We're going to be, as of this date, well over $100,000 right now. So I haven't received the February, you know, we're still in February. I have received the January bill, and I know there's some additional work we've done, we're going to be well over $100,000.
So I heard on the news today, or this week, that the governor is requesting emergency assistance, federal emergency assistance aid for the, so is there a possibility that school districts would be able to submit bills if, in fact, there was federal disaster aid that was, that came to the state? Is this a possibility that we could get some reimbursement for our cost?
This, we talked about this informally this morning at the meeting with Belmont when I was with the town managers from Arlington, Belmont, and Lexington. And it's something that I need to look into whether or not school districts are eligible for. I suspect we are. So we will look into that. But I haven't seen anything formally yet, but I will be looking at that.
Because they have to wait to pass that. Doctor, please. Cheryl?
Mema has issued a memorandum for the January 26th storm. However, they only issued it to emergency directors of municipalities. So you may need to reach out to the fire chief of Lexington or Lincoln to get their opinion about whether we are eligible.
I think I'll follow that up. I think I'll call that out. So those are some of the concerns that have identified themselves so far. On the other side, because of some unfilled positions, we do have some projected surpluses in some of our teaching services lines, 2300 and 2310, and that's on page 23. And also on page 24, line 5100 and 5200, we're looking at some projected savings in our retirement plans, I'm sorry, or insurance programs. So insurance and retirement, actually. So we'll be watching carefully. I expect to get the February bills earlier in March. We'll identify areas that we can fund the issues related to the snow removal line item and take the necessary actions even if it requires freezing budgets as we move into the spring season. Any questions on the general fund expenditure report? If not, just touching base real quick on the revolving funds account that's on page 27 in the packet. All but the post-grad programs running in a surplus fund balance. We talked about the PG program at some length at the finance subcommittee meeting. Finance, what we include in our general fund budget is $100,000 to support the administrative costs associated with the PG program. But we also collect tuition either through assessments from in-district towns or from students directly for out-of-district towns. We collect 50% from in-district towns and 50% from in-district students and 100% from out-of-district students. So that tuition, as well as $100,000, goes into a revolving account. However, as part of our foundation enrollment out of the Chapter 70 formula, the district also receives in excess of $200,000 on behalf of those post-grad students. That is used to fund the general fund budget. And by law, that needs to fund the general fund budget. So the mechanism for moving that into the post-grad program would be to increase the allocation from $100,000 to some other number. That's the mechanics of moving those funds into the revolving account. So I wanted to bring this to the finance subcommittee's attention because it may be a need as we move towards the end of the fiscal year where if this account is running into a deficit, there may be some consideration that the district may have the resources to offset that deficit based upon the revenue it collects through the Chapter 70 formula. It's just an idea that I wanted to address with the finance subcommittee, recognizing that we want to eliminate deficits in these revolving accounts. And, you know, the recommendation I think was received with some consideration that not only is the Chapter 70 formula talking about the minimum required contribution from the towns, but it also talks about Chapter 70 state aid that's received. So I just wanted to just comment on that briefly, just to suggest that we recognize that there's a deficit, but I think we're considering options that will, by using district resources responsibly, we may be able to address that deficit. You may recall, when you see it, we came in it with a beginning balance of $68,000, and right now it's at $104,000. So it has grown slightly. We're not seeing any substantially lagged deficits, but it's my goal to have no deficits in these revolving funds as of the end of this fiscal year, and I'll continue to work with the finance subcommittee to that end. Outside of that, those are the only comments I have on the revolving fund report.
Just want to add a little bit to the last topic there, and that was that, to the extent that the students, PG students, are counted as part of the foundation enrollment and so forth, the state aid that we receive as a result of their being here helps to reduce the assessments to member communities for regular students. And that's a good thing. It may change a little bit from year to year, but it's a good thing, and you can talk about how the mechanics get applied and whether they get applied to put the money back into the revolving account. But it is working in our favor right now.
Thank you.
We have a donation.
Yes, I received a donation. At your table, you'll see.
Five million welding machines we're getting, is what it looks like. We're getting five million welding machines.
Actually, we're getting five. And from the Hop Foundation. We asked the committee to accept the donation. So much gratitude.
And these machines, are they new, used, are they new to our program?
They're new, I believe. And we worked on this with the, I believe they're, you know, I believe they're.
I think this is the gentleman who raised his hand and said he'd give $100,000.
Yes.
Is it really?
Yes.
When we got down to it, it was a little less than that.
This is just the beginning.
This is the beginning. It's new equipment that we worked on with Dean Strecker and Michelle Roach, who's very involved with this as well. And we're moving forward with accepting the donation.
Okay, just a comment. How can we thank this man? So he knows how much we appreciate this.
I have the letter right here.
Good kind of tax deduction.
I know he'll get a tax deduction.
No, but he put his money where his mouth is.
He did put his money where his mouth is, and I think that we have an obligation to keep him up to date as we develop that new program.
Yes.
But I think a letter would be nice.
She has.
Ready to go.
Something, he could, or the example that he has set could be added to presentations about the building project because it's equipment that can be used in the new educational plan and in the new facility. Maybe we would stimulate other donors of similar.
All in favor of the motion to table?
With huge gratitude.
To accept the donation.
A little raid. One would think. Okay, passes in the other one.
Thank you, Mr. Jana concludes my report.
Thank you.
My only other concern was that I don't understand why the snow budget went so high. I thought it was just you and Ed with shovels on the roof, and I think that you're, you know, should be included.
We almost had shovels, 16 shovels available for tonight.
You have to help.
Can I ask why?
Why what?
Why, why things happen like they did yesterday?
Yes, I can explain it to you.
Thank you.
Very briefly. We had, two years ago, when we had a, three years ago, 2011, I think it was.
2011.
When we had a similar weather event, we had a lot of buildup of snow. We had some engineers come in and do an analysis. They told us at the time that our, we were under the capacity of the load bearing characteristics of the roof. While we, in the last couple of weeks with what's been building up, I again asked the different engineers to come in. And by the time they, and we were doing some snow removal on our own, thinking that we were beating the requirements of the last engineering report. Well, the new engineers, they're more like lawyers than engineers, I think, gave us some differing opinions about it. So we had to, on Saturday, and actually it was Sunday afternoon when they finally gave us an opinion that until we could bring the snow down to an average depth of 12 inches, that we shouldn't occupy the building.
So you were on notice?
On Sunday.
Correct.
Sunday. And then we had the opportunity to get a contractor in Monday morning who wasn't available earlier, I guess, but, and then I didn't want to have to quarry 45 individuals plus, anyway, so that's what we needed to do to comply with the recommendations of the engineer. Apparently, the roof has been deteriorating, and so the load capacity is not what it was just three years ago.
It's all flat, then?
Yes.
Imagine being the engineering firm that gave a report to the school administration saying it's safe and no action is required, and then something happens.
Well, we sort of imagine the administrator who doesn't do anything.
Superintendent Negotiations and Evaluations Subcommittee, School Committee Evaluation Subcommittee, Mr. Or.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll talk about the superintendent's negotiating evaluation piece first, and then talk a bit about the school committee evaluation subcommittee. We, at our last meeting, we reviewed, oh, first of all, I wanted to ask, was anyone, we asked, we asked at the, what, the December meeting or January meeting, if you had, if you had any comments about the superintendent's progress toward to meet goals, to let Liz know. I did check that Liz, she had not heard of, heard of anyone. But if anyone does have any comments about, still hasn't, might have been comments about the progress report, to please let Liz know she'll pass along to Ed, although we're not going to have a full-blown discussion tonight about them because of the fact that people didn't have comments. But we did talk about them, the committee did, and we had some recommendations for Ed, which I passed along for regarding the report that he gave us. We, first of all, we want to express, we express our appreciation to Ed for the good faith effort that was made to provide documentation to support the progress toward meeting the goals. We felt it was a big improvement over the documentation provided last year based on what we were asking, not that it was anything that would help. But we did have some comments about, about the final report, in fact, there's one in March, but coming for that report or the final report for the year, is to add metrics, add a qualitative or quantitative metric to each goal. In other words, what was the result of the goal? For instance, there was a goal that X number of teachers would have professional development training in, to improve their performance and their teaching, knowledge of teaching or whatever. But what was the effect of that? What was the result? Not just that X people took the course, but what was, what did it yield? What, how did it impact teaching and learning in the classroom? So we, I mentioned, Ed, we shared these with Ed, and Ed is working on applying a quantitative or qualitative, or depending on which it is, a quantitative metric to his goal. So we'll see what the results are. What was the impact? What did it yield? Not just, you know, 14 people went off to, and I don't mean this sarcastically, 14 people went to professional development, but what did, what happened as a result? What did it do for teaching and learning in the school? So we'll, we should see that in the final report. And I'm not going to go through the law, but we had comments about, suggestions for each of the goals about what might be a qualitative or quantitative metric to add to that, to that goal. So then also when we're, we're supposed to have next year already, when we talk about SMART goals for next year, we all look for that, that element in the goals. We talk about the goal, have a result component, would be part of, one of the part of SMART goals. And that's, anything you wanted to add, Nancy, or Dave, about that?
No, I think you're spot on, Dave. I mean, the, the thing that we wanted to be able to accomplish, as a result of the goals, we want to be able to stand proud of the accomplishments of the, of the organization and to be able to feel that there was a measured, desired result that we could tangibly recognize. A lot of times when you have these SMART goals, they are measurable, but we don't see what the impact and result is in the overall organization or the district. Enrollment is fine when you make an enrollment number and you want to say it grows by 5%, but the impacting figures on that, on lessening the burden, increasing number of educated students in the region, district, those types of things are the product components we want to be able to recognize as a committee.
Anything you want to add, Nancy? Add, add, this is.
Nope.
Okay. So that's, that's where we're heading with this, is to add that component to this year also to the whole lot of that, which will be, where Ed develops goals for next year as well. We don't have any, the other thing we have to report, so moving on, on the self-evaluation process, we were supposed to meet with Jim Hardy from MAFC on February 12th, but the last minute, he wasn't able to come to the meeting. So we didn't, we've not made any other progress on that. But we scheduled, rescheduled the meeting. First, it was scheduled for tomorrow, but Ed had, Jim had to reschedule, so we had one for Thursday, so we're meeting this Thursday with Jim Hardy. So we'll continue moving along with.
Dave, I look at yourself as some progress. We got a date out of him. I said, we did, we did get some progress. We got a date out of him.
Yeah. It's been hard for us to find dates to meet for a number of reasons, but we got this one. We'll see if it goes out okay. So that's all that I wanted to, that we wanted to report.
Much Policy Task Force report, Alice.
Yes, it's just the midyear review of the, so if you look at pages 30 and 31, these were our goals. And I think, you know, what's helpful to do is to realize how much of our goals that we accomplished. And I'm just going to briefly highlight the school building project. You know, we had a wonderful report tonight from Ford. We, you know, we talked about our communications. We talked about the projects, what the timeline is. And, you know, I think that we can safely say that we are on target with respect to this goal, and we should feel very good about that. An enormous amount of work was done.
Huge amount of work.
Huge amount of work. On enrollment, I think that, again, we had great report tonight. We talked about the kinds of work that's happening. And I think, you know, so think about this in terms of, we put this down as a goal, and it really helped to coalesce a whole thinking about the way we think about enrollment for the school. I think, you know, under finances, Alice will momentarily be talking about that. I think we're on target. One area where I think we feel, have felt some frustration is the, on our analysis of the per pupil cost. And I think that we recognized that this was probably an overreach for this year with the other things that we have on our agenda. I don't know if you wanted to add anything about.
And we raised that with superintendent, and that was in our report, I'm so.
I would just like to make a comment on that. I was the one who initiated this idea a number of years ago, and the reason why it's important to say this, we go into the, although people are very, very interested in the capital costs, when we go into a new building, there's also going to be change in operational costs. And in order for us to be credible, we have to be able to explain, because it seems as if our operating costs are far higher than those of our peer districts. And some of them is appearance, is the way you create the numbers, and some of it may be reality, and some of the reality may be for good reason, but there's a suspicion that some of it is inefficiency or who knows what else. And if you're going to have the trust of people buying you a new building, that you're going to have to explain or demonstrate that your operational costs are not out of line for what you want, and you're going to have to also be able to talk about the operate, how the new project is going to impact your operational costs. So I think this is a big area of credibility with people. My guess is that most of it can be explained. And the fact that there's something that can be explained, but we're being beat up on right and left in many of these communities, is something, a big obstacle to us in having financial credibility. Now, over the years, we've fixed almost of every other aspect of financial credibility. We talked about how effective the audit. We talked about how effective the audit has been. You can't even imagine the kind of audit reports we had a decade ago, or the quality of the reports we were getting from the administration between then and now. It's bringing in the modern world, very good reports, a lot of transparency. So ninety percent of the issues and the improvement in the revolving accounts is incredible. But the one issue in which people can legitimately beat us up on is an understanding of our operational costs. I know that there have been a lot of priorities, but some work needs to be done on that because they're asking about it. It's a credibility issue at some of these times, we're being beat up about it. And I would bet that most of it can be answered, either, most of it, most of it is either these things are computed differently because our model works a little bit differently, or there are benefits you get for the money you're spending. One of the benefits may be higher special ed services because we have a higher special ed population. Another benefit may be we focus a little bit more on academics here, but you've got to be able to say, and we can't say that now. That's a frustration for me because I see some of these communities beating us up on this issue, and we have to be solved at least in a preliminary way. So that's why it's so important to me, because it's going to go against your financial credibility. You're doing great work in the building committee, great work in the financial statements, great work in the audit for revolving accounts, but this one area also has to be improved, and it has to be improved in quickly. So that's my only comment on this whole report here. Yes?
I think most people understand, just sort of, it's fairly obvious why it costs more to put a high school student through a vocational program than through an academic program, but why they appear to cost more than other vocational schools on a first order basis is, I think, the question that really needs to be asked. And I don't think we need a comprehensive, I know evidence doesn't do very many things halfway, but just picking out new large categories at some point in relatively near future and doing the comparison, looking at where, where is there a difference? I looked at some of the numbers that were on the DESI website a year or so ago. Frankly, I gave up because I got a job. There's stuff there, and I know it takes time, and there's a lot of other important things that we've been doing, but it would be nice to have that sometime.
But we had a job, we talked adversely every meeting about, is there someone, has someone been found, and it's been difficult for Kevin? You could explain that.
We, yeah, we haven't been able to engage someone to do an independent analysis. I have one more option I'm pursuing. However, I have already started doing some preliminary data collection just to try and isolate those areas that would become evidence of it, I can drill down a little bit more. So we have been making some work, we're just not.
I think, I think we agreed that having an independent third party look at it would be more credible to deposit, but we still need some notice.
All right, Cheryl.
Well, Ed and Kevin joined us to Oxbor a couple weeks ago. And they did attempt to alleviate some of the angst, but again, when all else fails, the detractors fell back to the operational costs. And I've tried to explain about, you know, that we're more affluent than some of the other vocational districts in the state, and so the state contributions are different. But they can't get past the fact that it costs twelve thousand dollars to send a student to a high school that is recognized across the country as being a top-tier school, where it's costing them twenty-four-plus to send a student to this school. They don't feel they're getting the bang for their buck.
So continue. Thank you for the reminder.
So, so I think that as we look at it, we look at that one as a work in progress. We just, the relational, the professionalism of the school committee, number four, Dave just gave us a report on the status of that. And number five, really to follow up with Dave, I think as we went through this, we realized that long-term, these goals related to teaching and learning really need to coalesce around more qualitative, quantitative measures that are really something so we could, over time, see changes in student performance. And I think because of the building project, we have not had the time to focus on those kinds of discussions, but I think it's been a learning process for those of us in the committee. So I think, you know, we should give ourselves a huge round of applause. We have done an amazing job this year in terms of what we set out to do. We are moving forward, and we should feel that we have made significant progress in all these areas with the help from a lot of people.
Here. Policy Task Force, Alice.
Hey, so I'm getting a cold. Sorry, I didn't know when I came. So if you go to page thirty-two, there's a list of three votes, and Liz had very kindly put into the packet the redline copies of the policies that we're talking about tonight. There's three of them. I'm pretty confident about these policies and their quality because they've been through such an extensive vetting process, the finance subcommittee, and Kevin and others. They've been edited by the finance subcommittee, and I would take a motion to approve.
All of them?
Yeah, let's go for all of them.
So move.
Second.
For first reading.
For first reading, so they'll be coming back. So we have the motion on the table, and so the question is, is there any discussion on any of these policies? Hearing that, just, I know you mentioned that it was reviewed, but it has been vetted by the auditors, because I know that.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to have that. Okay, any further discussion on these three policies? Seeing none, all in favor of motion at the table. It's unanimous, thank you very much. You'll see them again.
May I recognize Alice for the progress she's made?
I've been absolutely.
It's so efficient to have the committee of one.
The entire credit goes to others, Liz, Kevin, finance subcommittee. All we're doing is just pushing things and making them go.
Nevertheless, if you weren't here, it wouldn't be done.
Absolutely.
So there you go. Secretary's report.
It's our main job, just the same.
I would like to make a motion that to approve the minutes of January twenty. We received some, some medical corrections and, and, so with the corrections, is there a second?
So.
Is there any discussion in the minutes? Seeing none, all those are favorite.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Great job, guys, it's ten o'clock.
Well, we'll fix that.
Any, any opposition?
No.
Okay, so I just have a brief announcement.
An announcement? Minutemen Boys won a vocational small school championship by beating Mr. Lafferty's school.
Which school?
Basketball. So I just learned that on Thursday, we're entering the state championship in our first, that's the semifinal, right? It's the opening round. It's the opening round. Our first opponent, the opening round, is Shashi.
Here.
Here, Thursday night, seventy-five. It's wonderful. Yeah, it's great.
We've already beat Shashi once this year.
We're going to kick. Well, then I can make an announcement. Dover Sherwood won their first round of the tournament today. That's great.
Ed, what do you have to say?
So are you shaking your head? Oh, yeah. I've been growing it out, so.
Okay, so.
That's why I'm even tall, like, my four school, I'm eating.
I said you were hungry, Henry.
I like Vermont Farm.
I was accused of that, too.
Just, just two brief comments. First, again, I apologize for being late. God's one twenty-eight potholes, and we're tired. And secondly, let me just point out that, did you, do you see the force of momentum that is starting to propel us right now based on this meeting? Did you see that?
It was a nice.
Across the board. They're not all going to be like this, but when you, when those little potholes along the way for this project, I replace, just remember this meeting and that underneath there is a current momentum. There are people who want you not to recognize that, who want to pretend that it's not true. And, and we all ignore them, and think back to this meeting and the many meetings we have that are more like this. I greatly look forward to March twelfth. Requesting a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.